When we get started, we're gonna start with the prayer. Mr. Billbow is gonna do the prayer. We used to come to the agenda meetings, we didn't normally do this, but this is something we instituted on this new term. "Oh, Heavenly Father, we pray and ask that you watch down upon us, that you guide us in faith, so that you give us good judgment and good wisdom, so that we may rule effectively and decently in order. We pray and ask your blessings. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Last city council meeting, we had a tradition that was started by this council that we pinned all members of the council. One of our members, Mr. Donald Fondale, was not here, but he's here today, and I want you to come up, come on up, Mr. Fondale.
You want me to stand down? Everything I do is all right.
Ms. Renee?
Appointed Chairman to review bids for project number CP 3502, Kirby and Hodges Street Sidewalk Repairs. An ordinance ordering demolition authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition of a structure located at 709 McNabb Street, Garden Drilling Company Incorporated, owner. Another demolition at 104 North Moss Street, Edgar Madrigal, owner. Another demolition at 1630 Gifford Street, Denny L. Jones, Montgomery, owner, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana. Another demolition at 2611 General Patch, David, Nonette, Melchior, Renee Lyman, Vanessa, Madison, and Derek Anthony Guidry, owners. Another demolition at 923 Alamo Street, front house only, Willie Nunez, owner. Another demolition at 408 Gilpey Drive, Edward Babinow, owner, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana. Another demolition at 416 Gilpey Drive, Adeline, Brown, Ryan, and Angela, no middle name, Brown, owners. Another demolition at 3214 Louisiana Avenue, Edgar Madrigal, owner. Another demolition at 1725 North Simmons Street, Joseph Petrie, Martha Henry, Marcus Simon, Brandon Simon, and Michael Simon, owners. Another demolition at 1829 Sixth Avenue, Adam J. Caesar Senior and Elvia Ann Caesar, owners. Another demolition at 211 North Hodges Street, Bobby, no middle name, LaFleur, and June Marie Jubert, LaFleur, owners. Another demolition at 918 North First Avenue, detached garage only, Patricia H. MacArthur Baxter, owner. Another demolition at 1610 Graham Street, Alan J. Mitchell, owner. Another demolition at 2200 Rose Street, R2S Investments LLC, owner. Ordinance is for final action, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for project number LCR 409, Buddy Prejean Park Enhancements. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for the purchase of janitorial supplies for use by various divisions and departments of the City of Lake Charles. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Greater St. Mary Baptist Church for the transfer of ownership of properties, parcel number 00570052 and parcel number 00581771, for use in the church's operations related to the CDBG DR Hope Center project. An ordinance adopting and levying the annual property tax milages for the City of Lake Charles for the tax year of 2025. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to amend the 2024-2025 operating and capital budget to reallocate funds from DR 000 Disaster Recovery Unappropriated Fund to DR 009 LCPD Annex Project. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into a lease agreement with Turf and Saw Management LLC for the lease of equipment to be used for the maintenance of Mallard Golf Club grounds. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible quote and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for Bancroft Street Sewer Repair. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible quote and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for Ryan Street Sewer Repairs. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for the construction of a new judicial complex. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to accept portions of River Ridge Drive and River Ridge subdivision, including public right-of-ways, drainage, water, and sewer lines, sewer and traffic control devices for ownership and maintenance by the City of Lake Charles. Resolutions, public hearing, and consideration on alteration of existing shoreline contraband bayou to conduct dredging operations for two boat slips, construct a boat shed, place fill for bank line stabilization behind existing bulkhead, and extending an existing covert and constructing a new bulkhead at 3725 Burjane Lane by Louisiana Marine Construction. A resolution approving the appointment of Emily K. McDaniel as Director of Finance. A resolution approving the appointment of Wendy Goodwin as Director of Human Resources Personnel of the City of Lake Charles. A resolution approving the appointment of Russell J. Stouch Jr. as City Attorney for the City of Lake Charles. A resolution approving the appointment of John Cordon Jr. as City Administrator. A resolution approving the appointment of Renee Piteville as Clerk of the Council for the City of Lake Charles, Louisiana. A resolution appointing two members to the Lake Charles Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, representing college-list board members whose terms expire July 26, 2028, for a three-year term. A resolution accepting project number DR 010 LCFD Fire Training Facility Demo and Earthwork as substantially complete and authorizing the advertising of the 45-day lien period. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 521 Kingsley Street, Charlie Toussaint Estate, owner, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 2200 Commercial Street, First New Life Missionary Baptist Church of Lake Charles Incorporated, owner, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 909 14th Street, shared only, Betty Lou Nelson and Marjorie Nelson, owners, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 742 South Line Street, Leona Anthony Orfe and Harriet Orfe Tripp, owners, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 612th Street, Stratton Oakmont Properties LLC, owner, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 2015 Evan Street, Deborah F. Landry Celestine, Barbara N. Landry, Courtney M. Landry, Justin Landry, Wilson Landry, and Donald R. Landry Jr., owners, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 1118 South Elton Court, shared only, Yolanda Angeline Harrigan, owners, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 811 17th Street, Alice Diane Cook Williamson, owner, with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 2007 13th Street, Don Hammack Hoffpower, owner, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana with a companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of a structure located at 3421 McKinley Avenue, OZ Fisher Jr. Estate and Sally Fisher Estate, owners, subject to a tax sale to the state of Louisiana with a companion ordinance. A resolution authorizing the City of Lake Charles to advertise received sale bids for project number CP 3469 McNeese Sidewalk, Carbine Road to Lake Crest Boulevard, with a companion ordinance. Ordnances that are on for introduction only are introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an employment contract on behalf of the City of Lake Charles with John Cordon Jr. as City Administrator as approved by resolution adopted on July 16, 2025. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Lake Charles with Russell J. Stouch Jr. to provide legal services for the City of Lake Charles pursuant to the approval of his appointment as City Attorney by the City Council by resolution adopted on July 16, 2025. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to allow more than 10% cumulative increase for a change order for project number CP 3386 2020 Asphalt Overlay Project. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to allow more than 20% cumulative increase for a change order for project number DR 010 LCFD Fire Training Facility Demo and Earthwork. Introduction of an ordinance for consideration to amend the official zoning map from a residential zoning district to a mixed-use zoning district located at the east side of the 4800 block of Isles Road, including Rue de Jordan, Chalet Ardorté, Chalet Ar Nord, Chalet Asoud, Petit Rue, Amy Street, Lowden Street, Lauren Street, and Kenneth Street. Introduction of an ordinance approving the City of Lake Charles's 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Action Plan. This ordinance will authorize the City of Lake Charles to make application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for its 2025 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program, home funding allocation. The last item, because the rest of those are companion ordinances, is item 62, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated to renew the lease of a body camera system for use by the War Three Marshal's Office for a five-year term, and that's all that I have.
Right off the bat, Ms. Renee, I think there's an agenda item missing. The Lake Charles North agenda item was supposed to be on the 16th.
What's the Lake Charles North item?
I don't know exactly how it read, but it was involving the city and a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Lake Charles North Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, I'll add that one back on to this agenda. Thank you.
At this time, we have a speaker, Mr. Scott Walker. Come up. Want me to read this on your behalf?
Sure, if it's quick.
Okay. "The Chamber Southwest Louisiana Alliance, the leading regional economic development organization, appointed Scott Walker as the President and CEO in February of this year. Scott is responsible for guiding the organization through its next phase of growth and further advancing economic development in southwest Louisiana. Walker brings more than 20 years of leadership, experience in economic development, business management, and community collaboration. He has a proven track record of driving significant economic growth, creating jobs, and fostering partnerships that have helped transform communities. Walker served as the President and CEO of the Greater Lafayette Commerce in Lafayette, Indiana for 10 years. There he built and led a highly successful economic development department, securing over $2.5 billion in investment and the creation of the more than 5,000 new jobs. He developed innovative talent attraction programs and led major strategic initiatives that positively impacted the region's workforce and business climate. He was the Chief Executive Officer of Midland Tomorrow in Midland, Michigan, from 2004 to 2014, attracting more than $1 billion in new investments and creating more than 2,000 jobs. He also launched a $17 million redevelopment initiative and developed a smart zone to foster innovation and entrepreneurial growth. Scott was also the Six Sigma Black Belt and Senior Account Manager at TRW Chassis System in Detroit from 1995 to 2004. Walker's career began in automotive industry, where he led Six Sigma projects and successfully negotiated multimillion-dollar contracts with major corporations like General Motors, achieving a company record in gross profit margins. Mr. Walker?"
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Council members, the city staff, mayor, and the public that's here, I want to thank you for your time this evening. I won't go through all of the slides I have about me, and I'll move quickly through this presentation. It's a standard deck I've been using to present on the work that we're doing at Southwest Louisiana Alliance. But I think it's important that I'm here tonight to share with the direction that we're heading, and how do we really win as a region and be successful over the long term. So with that, you heard about my background. I have lived all over the U.S. as well, and so this is my sixth state that I've lived in, and I've been doing this work for about 20 years in economic development in Chamber of Commerce. So moving into the Southwest Louisiana Chamber of Commerce here in February, so I've been on the ground for about five months. Our vision is that we're an exceptional and dedicated team of professionals that work with a coalition of businesses, industry, public entities, and nonprofit organizations to make southwest Louisiana a better place to live and work. The work that we've been doing over the past five months has really been to evaluate the organization, how do we move forward, as well as what does our economic development work look like and where should we be going? The primary basis of what we'll be working on, the way that we'll do the work of our organization, is we'll be embracing the entrepreneurial operating system, which really focuses on how do we successfully achieve the goals, continue to work on the priorities that are board and our constituents, our investors, like the city of Lake Charles, ask us to work on. So with that, I just want to highlight, what is our competition? It is every community in the U.S., and they are all fierce and proactive in the work that they're doing to attract people and companies to move to those locations. We have, we are in a global war for talent. People are making investments in their lives and where they are, and we need to be winning those investments. Regional economic development success looks like this. It's really kind of three components with an economic factor. Great talent goes where there's great companies. Great companies go where there's great talent. That's a virtuous cycle. That's underpinned by quality of life. We have to have great quality of life to attract both great talent and great companies. The economic factor that rewrites that equation is innovation. We have to become an innovative place to be able to have long-term, sustainable success. The traits of winning regions, and I apologize, the slide looks a little bit wonky, but the traits of winning regions are they're strategic and they have a long-term focus, they invest in themselves first, they're organized for collaboration, they have a customer service focus, and they also continuously improve. So those are the five traits. I'm going to run through a couple more slides about each of those traits. So in partnership with the state of Louisiana, who just launched their Louisiana Economic Development Plan, we're launching a plan to create a long-term strategic vision that will be in alignment with the state. And the underpinnings of what their plan is, the five pillars they talk about in their plan are ease of doing business that Louisiana and our region need to become a great place for businesses to locate. High wage employment, they want thriving regions, they're targeting specific industries that look a lot like our industries, and they want investment that has a global impact. And so obviously, the investment that we've seen already this year and the investment that's coming down the pipe are like that, but our mission will be how do we turn that into long-term success for the region? So investments like Woodside and the other LNG projects, how do we take that in our region and turn that into our long-term success? So with that, we're launching a strategic planning process that we're going to ask for your active participation in. So over the next six months, we're going to create a strategic plan that's really an economic development vision for this region. We'll identify barriers we have for growth of our region, and we'll also then identify the key things that our organization should be working on to help the region achieve the goals that we set. The next thing that successful regions do, they have that long-term strategic vision, but they also invest in themselves first. So obviously, projects like Port Wonder and other quality-of-life investments that we have made and can continue to make in the future are really critically important for us to be successful. People are coming into regions and they're looking at what their life is going to be like over the long term, and we have to demonstrate that we have not only started a plan, but we also have made investments already. And so it's critically important that we, as a group, continue to think about what are these investments we're making for quality of life. And it's, that global war for talent matters, right? Not every place has all of the assets that we have, but we have to get better at how we use those assets and how we promote them. We have to organize ourselves for collaboration as well. Successful regions work together really well. When I was involved with Saab locating in West Lafayette, Indiana, which they're building the T-7A Red Hawk, the Air Force fighter plane there in partnership with Boeing, they said that from the state, the governor, on down to the mayors, to the county commissioners, to the local economic development, to other businesses that they talked to, everybody had the same message about how great it was to do business there. That's what we need to be able to demonstrate. We have to organize ourselves for collaboration and partnership. So part of the work that we'll be doing is, as the alliance, we see that as our role is to help organize how we collaborate and work together. And those successful regions have a customer service focus. They are really good about helping companies get projects done, and that's the goal we need to have as well, is how do we enable companies to be successful in our, in our region, in our communities, and here in Lake Charles. And the last thing is they're never satisfied. They're continuously improving, and they're working to get better and better, and they're striving to move forward. They've demonstrated success to their constituency and the general public, and their constituents demand that success continue. So that's a critical part of what successful regions are doing. So with that, that's all my slides, so I'm sorry if I went a little bit over my time, but I think it's really critically important that we're at this time, right now, with new leadership in a lot of our organizations in the region, and that we can really achieve something great by working together. So with that, I'll just open up for any questions you'd have for me.
Any questions from the council?
Matt? Mr. Walker, thank you for visiting us. Thanks for laying out the plan for the alliance. I've long been impressed with the operation, and I know that Lake Charles and Louisiana have a lot of potential. Whenever I look at your track record, I can't help but notice it was a billion in Michigan and 2,000 new jobs?
Mm-hmm.
Two and a half billion in Lafayette, Indiana, and 5,000 new jobs. Lord knows, we need new jobs and investment, so I'm going to ask you to please set a personal record to increase that for Lake Charles. 3 billion and 6,000 jobs, if you can. Yeah, well, I think, I think we'll see that in the billions in the parish, right? We'll see billions of investment, but that job creation is equally important. And I really do think that we have a distinct opportunity to really move up the value chain in the research and development, where we are a place that commercializes a lot of great intellectual property that gets developed elsewhere. But if we work really hard, we can move up that value chain and see more research and development happen here in Lake Charles, in our region, and really change that paradigm that we have of a boom and bust economic cycle. And so I think there's a great opportunity for that, that would help flatten out the troughs that we've seen in the past, and so that's a lot of the work that we'll do.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Walker, is it possible that the council can get a copy of that strategic plan?
The states?
The one that you said you would formulate?
Absolutely, and we'll engage with you as part of that process and that strategic planning process, and absolutely, when it's completed, which will be around December, we'll, we'll come and we'll present to you and absolutely share the plan as broadly as we can. We want everyone engaged, involved, and working forward.
Mr. Mayor, you got anything?
No, I'm working with him on the, on the plan.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Great, thank you.
We'll move on to the next portion of the meeting where we hear from the council, from the districts. Mr. Billbow, you got anything?
Yeah, I have some concerns. In my neighborhood, we concerned about the Miami Tire Company that's on Highway 14, Gerson Memorial, about the boundary set between the area and the neighborhood of a fence being located at a, that a property supposed to have, a business supposed to have between the brown, of the business and the city and the constituents. And I understood, I made a phone call, and they said they had a street in the middle that separated it, but I don't think that's really enough, and I want to know what it takes to change the ordinance, because it's the only one, if you go on Gerson though, that doesn't have a 10-foot wood fence. It has a whole metal fence that's half-broken down and a trash everywhere, and you can see tires, and my neighbors are much older, and they're really complaining. And I want to know if we can change any zone possible to make sure they have a fence that protects them from a business. What it takes, I really don't know, but I had several calls, and I have people here today to discuss it with their concerns.
Mr. Billbow, I suggest that you try to get with Mr. Burgier in planning and kind of walk through that. He can explain to you the current ordinance and what you think needs to be done or put in place in order to satisfy what your concerns are.
Okay.
Of course, Mr. Cordon.
Yes, sir.
In regards to that, we have an ordinance that says that anytime a business abuts a commute, a property, that it has to put up a privacy fence. That street would eliminate that ordinance?
If it's a public, it depends on what type of street it is. There's, the ordinance applies in several different areas, but there is requirements. They say if you're next to a residential use, you've got to put up a buffer fence, and if you're along a roadway, certain areas, you cannot have a fence. In some cases, you can. So that's what I'm saying, I'd say, get with Mr. Burgier and try to explain those.
If you give me the address, we'll investigate it and find out what rules apply and what rules don't apply.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a, the beautification of the Kroger parking lot, when I, when I passed down Gerson Memorial, the grass is about six feet high everywhere, it's just, it looks like a dump. Like, I can't advocate that I, in my campaign, that I wanted business to come to Gerson Memorial, and then we pass down Krogers, everything on that side, the grass is extremely too high, like, nobody even cared. I don't know who, what you're in contact with, I don't know if, we don't own it, but if you pass down Highway 14, it looks terrible.
Ms. Paula, before you speak, can you tell the new council who you are?
Okay, my name is Paula Broussard. I am the Supervisor for Property Standards and Building Safety. I wanted to let you know, we do have an active case on that Krogers parking lot. It has one owner, and we want them to cut the front and clean up the back. So we do have an active case, it is on our radar. If the city has to cut it, we will charge, we'll put those charges towards the property owner to pay, okay?
I'm letting you know, everything I'm talking about, I done got several calls from constituents.
Paula, excuse me, do you have any idea, the timeframe to give them a ballpark? Or could you get with them tomorrow?
I just spoke to the inspector today, and we are sending it to the contractor to get it cut, because the property owner did not respond to us.
We've already been served.
Yes, we sent the notice. Our process is, we send a notice, regular mail, and we publish it in the American Press for two consecutive days. We publish twice a week.
Thank you.
Ms. Paula, could you also tell them, once we get them on the list and start cutting it, what's the process?
If we are able to cut it once, we have a process that we can file an affidavit at the courthouse, and we can cut it every 30 days without notice for a year.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Also, we have a broken barrier around the canal in the middle of Oak Park Boulevard that I'm really scared for safety. A car must evidently went through it, it's right across from Hancock Bank, Whitney Hancock Bank, and I've got calls about getting it fixed. I know it's a granite, gravity drainage issue, but I haven't got any word back from anyone, so I brought it to y'all to see if y'all can get somebody, it's a safety issue.
Is it a concrete barrier?
It's a concrete barrier, it's broke.
On the south side?
On the south side, on the, closest on the southeast side of Oak Park Boulevard. A major concern, I think kids walk that direction going home from Oak Park Junior High, and I see them all the time getting close to it, playing to it. I think we need to get that addressed as soon as possible.
And just for clarity, do, does gravity drainage on that canal or does the city?
Gravity drainage, I think it's more the parish, but the gravity drainage operates it.
Okay.
Yes, that's a gravity drainage lateral, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so I just, you know, with the kids passing by daily, I know they out of school right now, but when they was in school, it was a consistency. They always pass, you see them walking on it, you know, playing on it, and with it being broke, I wouldn't want to have to answer to anybody about something that we could take care of.
We'll send them a correspondence, let them know of your concerns and our concerns, and see if we can help it along.
All right, my, my final thing today, I had several calls about, in Oak Park especially, you know, we got the bigger trees, and you got the heavy limbs on the power lines. I know that's not really a city issue, but if somebody could get in contact with energy, they told me it's like a five-year time, maybe once in a while, they come every five years to cut limbs, to trim off the power lines, and with the heat of this summer and the possibility of storms coming, we think we would... and the possibility of storms coming, we think we would be proactive to get these heavy limbs off the power lines. And it's, I know it might be an issue, but my areas is a major issue. You can pass down any street in Oak Park and the trees all over in the middle. So you know it's covering the power lines and my streetlights. So people been calling me by streetlights, but you pass down and just trees done grew all over them. And I know that's what is the, the people on the property or the city. I'm talking, we thinking preventive maintenance, just in case something happened that could save us money way down the line. If we do a little trimming, it been five years since we had a hurricane. So we can make a call to get it put into a budget to get it trimmed. It might save us during this storm season.
We'll, we'll ask them to take a look at it and also to do it aesthetically pleasing. Cause usually when the energy goes in, they just cut around the line and the tree looks kind of weird after that. So we'll ask them to do it a little nicer for the neighborhood.
That's all for the day.
That's all, Mr. Bilbo?
That's all.
Mr. Weatherford?
Just wanted to follow up. We got, all got the email regarding short-term rentals and issues that some of them are causing. I know they're supposed to register. And one of the questions I'd asked and do, do we notify, whenever they register, do we notify the school board? That they're operating? Cause you know, if they're, as I understand the, the occupancy and sales tax, if anything that's less than a 30-day stay is subject to both those taxes. So if they're not submitting those taxes, they're out of compliance with the regulations. So that's one way that we can try to, you know, especially monitor some of the ones that have become problems.
We'll follow up on that, Mr. Weatherford.
That's it, Mr. Weatherford?
That's it.
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir. Thank you. No issues to discuss tonight, but I do want to say thank you to the city staff. Worked here 10 years and I have not worked with the city staff as much as I have this past week. I've received no less than four dozen calls and emails and promptly got with city staff to address them. Literally every department, with the exception of HR, I try to stay away from them. But, but every department has been super helpful and property standards very much so. TA and Paula and Robert and Leah probably run or want to run from my calls now, but they don't. I appreciate them responding so quickly and readily. And that is a good thing for our citizens because when they know that they can contact the city and a response will be given to them immediately and hopefully helpful service offered, but at least a courteous response that encourages more citizen engagement. And that's truly the only way that we're going to be able to clean up our city and empower people to really get involved in the process and, and help, you know, move Lake Charles forward. So thank you to city staff.
Mr. Fundell?
Yes, Mr. Marks, I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I got a letter from a gentleman, Alvin Broussard. He was going to show up tonight, but I, oh. He was going to show up tonight, but I asked him to give us a chance. What he got is, good evening, thank you for responding. Waste management trucks are dumping dumpsters at 4:00 AM, 4:30 AM, 5:00 AM, 5:30 on various weekdays. The dumpsters are on Highway Street, Shattuck, between W O Boston and Reynard, Mill Street and Carter Streets. They come once a week, sometimes twice a day. This is an ongoing problem. The problem was solved a couple of years ago. The trucks would come at 8:00 AM. The problem has returned. One morning the truck came at 4:30 AM. Another truck came and emptied the same dumpster at 8:00 AM. Do, do this make sense? I sent four pictures up to your phone. I forgot the picture that is a dumpster on Carter Street East parking lot with W O Boston. That please help the residents of Highway Shattuck, Mill and Carter Streets. Now I'm told that this is an easy fix, but why is this still going on? I don't know. The ordinance is already there.
Yes, sir. We'll contact Waste Management. Notes taken and somebody will get back with you and let you know what the response is. Typically when we notify them, they do try to comply unless there's a specific reason. But we'll let you know as soon as we find out.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Fundell?
Mr. Marks, yes.
Vezina?
Uh, nothing really. I, I'd like to get some information upcoming. I asked some questions about the Sale Street Bridge project. I know that's coming up sometime this budget year. And I know the, the, the hard feelings we got about the Preon Lake Road project. So I'm going to stay on top of it to let public notification about that project. Cause I understand we're going to close it for about six months. And of course, everybody's going to say that it, we did it right when school started. No matter when we did it, we did it when school started. So I'm going to, I'm going to stay on the engineering department to get me some information so we can keep everybody up to date on that. Sure.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vezina? Appreciate it.
Hey Craig, I got one for Harvey's district. He wasn't here tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we had a complaint about, I call it the old Richmond Suites Hotel.
I got it right here.
Oh, you got it?
We've been hitting it.
Okay, all right.
Right now, I'm gonna handle Mr. Harvey's district right now. He sent me an email and I'm gonna read it as he got it stated. He says, uh, I apologize for my absence tonight, but I would like to address a couple of pressing issues in my report that have previously been reported in my district. Number one, the properties located at 303 and 305 North Louisiana Avenue have become overgrown and remain unmaintained with debris piled up at the edge of the road for nearly a year. I have reported this situation multiple times, but no action has been taken. That's 303 and 305 North Louisiana Avenue. I, I can give you this after I get through. Yes. Uh, number two, I would like to thank the contractor for repairing the north southwest lane of Shattuck Street. However, no work has been completed on the north southeast lanes, which have neglected street repairs filled with asphalt. Third, and he has it highlighted, major complaint. There, there's a property behind 2636 Pine View Street. The gray street access that is overgrown and urgently needs attention. This property has encroached upon the current residence property and has become a nuisance. That's the one where that vacant lot where the hotel used to be, that boats up, butts up to the property? Number four, we have previously discussed the situation at the Extended Stay Hotel, 2600 Residences. I guess that's the name. Located at 2600 Molling Street. Residents in the area continue to witness lewd and unusual behavior. Although we had a productive conversation with the general manager that led to some improvements, laudering and pedestrian gatherings have recently increased. I'm inquiring about what steps can be taken to address this issue. Again, for the record, the occupancy and nature of the business at this establishment has remained the same and it, it, and it was before hurricane and COVID-2020. Uh, Mr. Harvey is thanking you and I would ask that we come back to this because we have some cards on it. So in the meantime, I'll jump over to my district. That's all. I can pass this on to you if you want.
Okay. As response to the 300 block of North Louisiana Avenue, the tree debris. Of course, we don't know who cleared the trees and put the debris on the roadway, but we have bid it out. That portion of property goes all the way from Bank Street to North Louisiana on the curve of Fournette. It belongs to two separate property owners. One doesn't pay the taxes, the other one does. Uh, Ms. Langery is trying to acquire the other portion. We gave her some time to see if she could. Civic Source can't clear the property for, in order for her to purchase the entire thing. So she's taking care of one portion of the property. She can't do the other side. So we bid it out. We're receiving bids this week to award. And then we'll have the contractor clear all those trees and the debris in that portion. So.
That's it for District A. District F, I would like to urge mayor and administration that we start a property standard campaign. Pick a month, whether it be the month of October, September, one of them days. Because property standards are starting to get out of hand. And I know we're shorthanded. I'm not picking on that department. We need to do some more hiring in that area. But I have several areas. One is the apartment complex on the corner of Louisiana Avenue and Walter Street. Uh, I think we need to send out some notices to these apartment complexes that that is unacceptable to let the grass grow like they have grown with residents living there.
I have a response to that. Uh, yes, I apologize. We actually found out that that property owner owns five complexes in the city. We have recently got in touch with the maintenance crew, which was recently hired. Uh, they've been in negotiations since January to try to finalize their contract. This property owner did the same thing last year. We have them scheduled for administrative hearing, August the 21st. And they're going to have to answer for neglecting those five complexes, which includes the tall grass. They haven't cut it since January. We actually have it on standby to bid out, but we want to give the contractor time to be able to catch up. After he catches up, he's going to be cutting those complexes every two weeks. We've received numerous calls. That's whenever we jumped on it. Apartment complexes, we normally don't inspect them because they have maintenance crews that, you know, keep track of them. Once we heard one person call us about the tall grass, we jumped on it. My goal was to bring the, the owner to admin hearing. We had a meeting this week about it. They have building safety issues, zoning issues and property standards issues at all the complexes. So we're going to address that. In the meantime, the grass is getting cut. Uh, we're inspecting it twice a week to make sure it gets cut. So.
Appreciate it, Ms. Paula.
You want me to name the complexes, the addresses? Because they're all over town.
Yes.
Okay.
Put them on the record.
I don't know the exact names. I know the addresses. Okay. 2960 Lake Street, 4404 Canal Street, 2001 Louis, 1045 Walter Street, 1515 West McNeese. Okay. Uh, the property owner is AB Red River Owner LLC.
And, and Mayor, this is one of the reasons why I'm saying we need a property standards campaign. And I'm, my concern is because I have a district that has a bunch of hotels and, well, hotel, apartments. And I don't want that to get out of hand. It's enough with the properties and the shorthandiness that we have in property standards. But we need to, I would like to see some sort of notification going out to the general public, letting them know that we're going to be monitoring property standards. There are violations, there are penalties. And just today, we had somebody that didn't show up for administrative hearing and there's a warrant out for their arrest. So I think that needs to be put out to the public that we're not playing with this because we're using taxpayers' dollars that could be used in other places to cut a lot of grass, you know? So I, I hope we can get on that, especially the hiring of more, more people in property standards. The second issue I have is a drain on the corner of Texas and College Street. I reported it now for two years and that's not to put a knock on somebody. I think the holdup is it belongs to DOTD and there's no sense of urgency. Somebody is going to get hurt on that drain before it's over with and the city is going to be responsible for it. So if we could get in touch with DOTD.
We will. And we have, and we will do it again.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And could I drive there all the time for the, for my route to?
And we can't afford you to get hurt.
No, but the street's really in bad shape there too.
It is, yeah.
And it may very well be related to that drain. They probably are, they're probably, it's not coincidental. I think that there's problems with both of them. They're, they're contributing to each other's issues. So I think they need to fix that intersection too.
Also.
We have, we have representatives from the engineering department. They're taking note of that and they'll contact them again tomorrow.
Okay.
And try to give you an update.
Also, the apartment complexes throughout the city. I think last year we passed an ordinance which affected businesses as well. You have to have a certain trash can in your business and it has to be covered, has to be closed, can't be exposed. I think we'll have, I know one of the complexes by my home, the Madrid Apartments. They do good sometimes and other times they leave it open and trash go in everybody's yard. I think that's another area that we need to start focusing on, making sure that all apartment complexes have their, their trash cans put in places where it's away from the public and trash won't be blowing everywhere. Yeah, the screen put in. My other issue, illegal businesses. Oh, let me go back. Mr. Harvey got a illegal business in his district. I don't have the name of it, but Ms. Paula, you're supposed to be aware of it. It's on your radar on Prater Street. I don't know the exact address. Uh, he got a picture of the house and I, I'll let him send it. But there, there's one there, there's one I talked about earlier with the, that didn't make it to administrative hearing today, that a warrant went out for their arrest. And we have a lot of businesses popping up that's flying under the radar, you know? And I think that we need to have a push on permitting, you know, see who's operating illegally and who's not. Uh, last year, I, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Cardone, we had an issue with a bunch of tires being put in certain areas around the city and, and we had to pay for that. So I'm hoping that we can find out about these illegal businesses. The status of my speed bumps, 22nd and 23rd. Nobody here? Talk about it. The, uh, speed bumps.
It's my understanding, they were approved and they're supposed to be installed. So I thought they were installed, so.
No, not yet.
Let me see.
But, uh.
I know.
That's all right. I'll check back during the week.
No, we will follow up with you tomorrow. The PO has been issued, it's been given to the contractor. So I'll follow, try to follow up and find out why it's not installed yet.
Okay.
But I didn't know it's been issued.
State Street, there was a traffic study done and I think I may have gotten my wires crossed because I asked for a traffic study, but it wasn't for speeding. The traffic study was, they have, uh, they have stop signs on the east and west. But the north and south is where the traffic comes, where I think we need to put two more stop signs to slow that traffic down. Because the business owners are right up on that street. And it was one of the business owners that called me and complained about her walking out the front of her building and those cars coming by so fast. So if we can go back to that traffic study, I know it doesn't warrant anything to do with speeding, but it may warrant two more stop signs to make that a four-way stop. The other one. Ms. Paula, we got another repeat offender, Willowick. You know what I'm talking about? The big house, the big brick house. There, yeah. We need to get on them again. And I think this year, you know, we've been, I ain't gonna say, we followed the process, but the process was too light. Now, I mean, our third year of the property with this, this property went to a sheriff's sale. It's several people own portions of it, but we need to bring them all to administrative hearing to get it done because that grass is extremely high, you know? So if we can get that, and like I said, he's a repeat offender. And that's the other thing. I think that these repeat offenders, like we, we have here, and we have a lot of them with homes. You know, we, we'll be dealing with them for two or three months and we get it worked out and then come to find out they got another house in another part of the city. So I think we need to make a concerted effort to drill down on these repeat offenders and, and put the fines down so that, you know, we can, we can alleviate some of this from the city. With that being said, I'm gonna cross over and I'm gonna start with.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
Another, these people call me about some of these apartments is that people will put furniture out near the dumpster and it never gets picked up. So I don't know how we address that. Cause it doesn't fit in the dumpster. I'm assuming the truck's not going to pick up the chair or mattress or whatever that's just sitting next to the dumpster, but.
Mr. Weatherford, it's junk and debris. They put it out by the dumpster. They don't pick it up. We can pick it up and lean the property.
Okay.
Rudy's got to know about it.
Yeah, real quick. And on the, um, on the Sale Road Bridge project, maybe if we could, you know, have a pre, a meeting before they start the project, a neighborhood meeting?
We will absolutely do that. That project will not start without a pre-meeting, letting the neighborhoods know what's going on.
I don't know if we have it at the library. I mean, there's, you know, several places that we.
We are talking about, should we postpone it till next school year? How long can we wait? But it's going to take a lot, it's going to be more than a summer, but we could go out for bids and have it done and start at that time. So we're having those conversations with the engineer.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, we go to the hearing from the public. I have a card for Mr. Rafael Laverne. Please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record, Mr. Laverne.
My name is Rafael Laverne. I live at 2208 Catherine Street, Lake Charles.
Mr. Laverne?
When you get a call at, when it's too late?
At the door? No, did somebody need to fill it out? Um, Mr. Laverne doesn't like to talk too much unless he's at the Zadikos. So I'm gonna read what, he has a petition here that's signed by several residents. Let me, let me say right quick, it's 1028 North Booker Street, Ms. Paula. 1028 North Booker Street and it's to the north of that address.
Right.
North of 1028. It's a lot that has been neglected for years. Uh, grass is overgrown. We'd like to get somebody to go out and take a look at it, put your eyes on it. And if we need to get them on the list in order to be cut, we can do that. Anything else you want to add? Anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Laverne?
No, I just, I've been trying to get this done for about four, five years now. If I walk in there, you can't see me.
Okay. All right. We'll take care of it, Mr. Laverne, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we have Anthony Bortis Sr. Oh, I said Bortis, it's Anthony Batiste Sr. Mr. Batiste, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Batiste Sr., I live at 1406 16th Street. First of all, I want to congratulate our newly-elected mayor, Mayor Marshall Simeon. I'm here, I'm really, been like concerned for a long, long time with the youth of our, the youth here in the city of Lake Charles. I love Lake Charles, I love our city, but we need more activities for our youth. You know, I know just recently, Westlake opened their facility with their water parks. Offa been having theirs for years. Even years and years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, we, many people, when I was at work, I'm retired now, many people used to always speak about, we need more activities for the youth in Lake Charles. We need something for our children here. They really need something. If you go to Westlake, or if you go to Offa, you get a family of three, it's $45 just for the kids, because they're not residents of Westlake. $5, you know, if you're a resident of Westlake or Offa. So, we need something. I don't know if the city already have something in the making or thinking about doing something in the summer, especially in the summertime for the youth. They need like a water park, we need that. This is not something I'm thinking about, or others that told me in the past thinking about it, because Offa and Westlake now has theirs. I mean, even way before they had theirs, we always been talking about theirs, even since I was like in my early twenties and thirties. But we just don't have these things, I don't know. I know in our city, we have a lot of adults, they have a lot of things to do, and I know it's not with the city. For instance, like Marty, we have a lot of adults, they have a lot of activities, but the youth in our city here just don't have a lot of activities. We need more activities in our city, especially for the children of our city. Because I love our city, I love our town here, and we got a lot, a lot of good people, but we need some efforts, and somebody gonna do something. And I hope the city and the councilman really think about doing something at, and thinking about the youth, you know? I don't know if I'll be able to see anything like that happen. I'm getting old and old in age, I don't know, but it's just, I really have a heart for the young, the young in our cities, and I think that would help them. We're talking about economic development, I know it'll bring a little bit more jobs to our area and everything, but I really would like to see that happen, you know, for us in Lake Charles. That's all I wanted to say.
And I will go on the record and say, Mr. Batiste is really, he mean what he say, because he been coaching since I was a kid, you know?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you want to address it?
Yeah, well, Mr. Batiste, we're starting with, it's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction. With the Gospel Recreation Center, there's a pool currently being constructed. They've already put the hole in, and the spray park is gonna be retrofitted over there, and we're putting a lot of energy into that, so that's one step.
Yes.
As we progress, we'll find more things. And I think what you're saying, you're talking about the teenagers. That's the, seems to be the group that seems to be at risk. So, we're gonna start working on our recreational facilities to be safe places where they can go and congregate without, you know, we saw the 16-year-old get shot at this party, so we're trying to create safe places where they can go in. Hopefully, when they are together, the only time they'll pull out a phone is to take a live video how much fun they're having.
Yes. Since you said it, Mayor, I remember some years ago, not too long ago, that they had what they call a midnight, you know, at midnight, they used to come, and that helped out a whole lot, it kept a lot of them off the streets and everything, and they really enjoyed that, those activities, you know? And maybe y'all can look at something, bringing something of that caliber back, you know, to our city, too. But also, what I was talking about, not like the teenagers, also, of course, but we need family-oriented things, especially, like I say, a lot for the family. I think, you know, I really commend what Offa has done, and what Westlake has done, and we can do the same thing, too. I know it may take some time, but we really need that. But I appreciate it, Mayor, and I appreciate what you all are doing and looking at that, too. And I heard about the project, and what's going on with MLK and different ones, and I've seen a lot that they doing, even over here, my building street, where former Rainor used to be, Rata Costa, they doing a lot there, too. So, thank you all very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Batiste.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Yolanda Beasley. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Beasley, 2525 17th Street. And I just want to echo what Tommy Bilbo was talking about with the tires, Miami Tire. Those tires.
Ms. Beasley, could you clarify what you're talking about? You're talking about the fence?
The fence?
Yes.
And then the tires, too.
The address is 2600 Gerslow, Moore Boulevard.
2600, okay.
2600.
But anyway, the fence, there's a driveway that they made themselves, and what happens is, when they get the new tires, they race them down the street. And if there was a fence, and the tires pose a hazard for breeding of mosquitoes, and something else I had on my phone.
Now, Ms. Beasley, just for clarification.
Our hazards.
That is a, that is an alley street, that's not a main street.
It's an alley street, and it's an eyesore. So, I'm just, nobody wants to see this anymore. What, they cut their grass, and what they do is, they leave it the drains. The grass is all in the drains. I have videos where I personally have went and cleaned it up, because we don't pay flood insurance, and I don't want to. So, I'm just asking that y'all, please, please, consider putting fencing back there, so that it's separate from our neighborhoods. If, please, all of you, I just would like for you to just go buy it and see for yourself. And you will not want this in your neighborhood. And that's all I have.
And Mr. Cordon, just, and the mayor, just for clarification, she is the president of the Oak Park Alliance?
Yes.
So, that's what she's doing there.
I am, and I just want to help clean it up, just clean up our neighborhood. Tommy has been wonderful in helping me and presenting these facts to you guys, but all I'm asking is for a fence.
I'm gonna pass by there after this meeting.
Please do. And also, if, when you turn that corner, there's, there's a big dumpster of trash, not on the Burger King, where the old Burger King was, but on the opposite side, that dumpster has been there for five days. Sunday, I took a picture, there was a tire at the stop sign. So, just, just take a look, you know?
And to my understanding, the trash can's supposed to be enclosed? It's just sitting out in the middle? They're supposed to have a closed-in built thing around it, and, um, get right outside Ms. Muton?
Yeah, and I've been to City Hall complaining, I mean, I complain to anybody who will listen, so.
We hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Thank y'all for your time.
Okay, now, we gotta jump back to Mr. Harvey's district with the problem with the hotel on the corner of Moline and 171. I have a question for you. Yes, sir. Now, it used to be a motel, is it now operating as an apartment complex, or? Still, Mayor, from my understanding, it still functions under the same capacity that it did before. Now, they just renting it out on an as-need basis. Might come stay a couple of days, might come stay a month, whatever it is. Samantha Theory, I see you shaking your head, you can come explain it now. State your name and address for the record, please.
Samantha Theory, 2728 Como Street. I'd like to thank the board, and to the councilman, and to our wonderful mayor. I have took a little trip there. I wanted to see every inch of what they brought in our neighborhood. They have dogs that use it on the ledge. They have people that sleeps outside with their luggage. I have went in the park where they call a suite. When I go through the doors, you can smell nothing but the marijuana, and it's trash all in the hallway. And it's not a hotel, the lobby is boarded up. Why would I, why would they put something like that on the front of a highway, of the interstate, where people pass? And they got people that got their clothes hanged out on the front. And the windows are open, like I said, they got animals that's all over the place, and people that's sleeping everywhere, and when you pass by, it's stench. We have been living there, the late eighties, and when we was there, it was all woods. It was nothing but woods, and it was a hotel. People have paid to, they have paid with a quarter for the property, and they have built on the property. So, this place is causing everybody's house that was built, their value to go down. And that's what we are concerned about. And we, this is all we hear. Every night, it's the police. Can you come check your vehicles? Because we have somebody that's coming there, that's breaking in people's vehicles. I had my neighbor, his truck been broken into from these people from the hotel. They don't sleep. They don't, we have never had this problem on the north, never had the problem with people coming in our neighborhood. I had to purchase me some cameras, and all night, my cameras is just beeping, because people is coming inside. I caught one of them, my door rattling. They want to see my house, they want to see if my door is unlocked. And I know y'all tired of me calling y'all, texting y'all, telling y'all. This have got to change. And me coming back from work, looking at stuff like that, just passing by at the red light, and you looking at all this, you looking at a dog using it on the balcony, you looking at people soliciting at the gas station. The little, I asked the man to come here and voice his opinion, he scared. The little, any guy, he scared. They have a guy that's in a wheelchair that's sleeping behind the dumpster. We have to look at stuff like that when we get back from our job. And they should have never opened nothing up like that, especially on the interstate in North Lake Charles. So, that's our concern. People walk all day. I had a neighbor that says, people that's from the neighborhood knock on his door all night, all night. We haven't had this trouble, until they put that, and it's not a hotel. I never seen a housekeeper. I never seen a maintenance person. All I seen is people just laying on the property, sleeping, causing problem, disturbing the peace. That's all I want.
Thank you, Ms. Theory.
Thank y'all.
And Ms. Theory, just to let you know, when they first bought that property, I looked into the company, I think they're out of Pennsylvania. They have a track record of doing that. They buy these properties and turn them into that, and I was, I had some very big concerns about it. So, we're gonna ask the police, we'll probably put a Signal 11 out there to increase the patrols. We're gonna get property standards to go out there, and we're also gonna get inspectors. It's time to bring this to a head.
And the bad thing about it, Mayor, we was not involved. We weren't, not even able to vote on it, so they done it under the table.
Well, the people bought the property, and after a while, I looked them up, and that's what, they're doing that all over the country. They buy these properties, turn them into basically weekly rentals, and then you get whatever they take there.
Yes, sir.
We'll address that.
Ms. Diana Gilery?
Oh, God.
Please state your name and address for the record.
2600.
I'm Diana Gilery, I live at 941 Cathy Street, and that's my neighborhood, and I've been living there for 40 years. And we don't even go to the station because of that hotel. We, I had some kids came to my house from that place, begging for food, hungry, you know, they'd have prostitution going on and all that. And, I mean, at night, we do not leave our houses because of them. You know, we afraid.
And what street is this, Mayor?
Huh? It's on Moline, the same, yeah. And see, we live on Cathy by the school. And, I mean, it's rough. I had people in my yard, my ring, doorbell went off, and they had a dog, two people, they looking, me and Ms. Linda looking through our yard and seeing, I guess, where they can come back and steal. And that's scary.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and I don't like, we don't leave out our house at night, period. You know, and we're all neighbors, but it's dangerous. And I done seen the police over there and everything, and they do have people, you know, sleeping like the guy with no legs, you know? And they come running across the street, and you gotta watch when you coming down the street, 'cause you'll hit them.
He don't be running, no.
No, 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 but, you know, it is very dangerous in our neighborhood, and I didn't used to be like that at all.
I understand.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
All right.
Ms. Janelle B. Gilery? State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Janelle Brickney Gilery, 1305 Apollyon Street. I want to commend the new councils, oh, Janelle Brickney Gilery, 1305 Apollyon Street. Congratulations to the new council, to the mayor. Again, I'm one of the ones, Ms. Paula, I commend you. This goes back to you also, baby. I think you said y'all shorthanded with the property standards. Guess what? Pass around. Mr. Mayor, we got them on our street, cut the grass. You know what they do? You know how they do it? They get a blower and blow it in the drain. And let me tell you, there's a lot of people don't have FEMA. I have FEMA. FEMA have never helped me. My bill is probably, when I get in this time, is a thousand dollars. But this hotel over there they talking about, I tell them over and over again, I wish the chief was here. Mr. Craig, we went over this before, I wish Chief the Wesley, I mean, Lake Charles was here. He said, take pictures and keep calling in. Okay, at one time, you all, let me tell you, you get off the interstate, they have one on each side knocking on your window for money. Okay, they don't do it no more. I love the Lord, he heard my cry. You knock on my window again, you're gonna get maced. I don't care if my husband is a police officer, but let me tell y'all one thing, it's danger, yeah, Craig, I'm serious, Mr. Craig, it's serious, you all. These people walk the neighborhood, and one of them was walking one day, and I'm like, may I help you? Oh. I'm serious, it's no, oh, it's dangerous. And you know what I did the other day? I, now, I went by myself, me, Jesus, and his daddy, in my car. Mr. Mayor, my president, I challenge you right around the whole complex, but I guess what? You're not gonna go by yourself, you better have the city with you. There's a balcony, everything's going on under there. It's to the point, I told my husband, I said, you know what? When I get off of 171, I ain't getting off of 171 no more, I'm getting off on Apollousa Street. I was told before, the chief is not here. Take pictures. Take pictures for what? If I take a picture, they're gonna shoot me. My life is more than a picture. So, now, I told Cherry, I'm gonna do this, you all. Instead of getting off on 171, I'm best off getting off on Apollousa Street. Take Apollousa Street to Simmons Street. Simmons Street to Mador. Mador, cross 171, go home toward Washington Merritt, if I want my life. I'm telling y'all, there's some illegal stuff going on there, that ain't nothing. One guy was out there the other way, been another week there, he just went to the trees and did his business. There's prostitution going on over there. The only thing I'm gonna leave y'all with, Mr. Mayor, my council, if we don't do nothing about it, it's gonna be some killings there, and it's gonna be too late to call KPLC, 'cause if you call KPLC, who, guess whose face you gonna see? Ms. Janelle. But at this point, you all, we are, and we need help. And Ms. Paula, I know you get tired of me, sister baby, let me tell you, she's telling truth, and you're telling truth. People are cutting this grass and leaving it on the street. All it's gonna do is drain up, the drain is flooded up, and then when we have a flood, what you gonna do? Oh, FEMA needs him, FEMA ain't gonna exist. So the main thing is, if whatever y'all can do, Mr. Mayor, this is not my first time coming here. We need help, and there's young kids, you all, drugs and everything going on. Somebody was out there one night, sleeping on the ground. And then I, did I talk to somebody? And I sure did. May 19th, I was coming from there, that Sunday, y'all, I wish I would've been there. I passed, I'm coming, I'm coming, hold on. Uh, did, it was on the balcony. He had three dogs, three dogs out there. So I took a picture, okay. The next Monday, come back, guess what? Same dogs, and I went, I called the young lady who worked there. The young lady, I asked the young lady, "Who pays for this? Does anybody know who pays for those in the front?" Wanna guess? You know what they told me? Maybe you can, y'all can tell. They told me the parish. Have you heard, the parish pays for this. And I, I called a certain individual person, and I told him what was going on. Told me, "I don't believe that." So you call, you make, you calling me a liar? I texted him, I said, "Well," I gave you, said, "Meet me 10 minutes over there." "I don't have a problem, since you calling me a liar." He left from his, he had to go here, and we went over there. When I, when I got there, I'm sitting in the scary parking lot of the store, and I called him, I said, "Where you at?" Thought you was, "Oh, I'm, I'm here, I'm here." So I went and met him. I had to introduce this person who represent me. I had to introduce him to who he was to me to represent me. I don't need nobody like that can represent my own stuff in my own city. And when I'm gonna call, I'mma call you, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I'mma call the parish, I'mma call my ex-mate, and you gonna call me a liar? I said, "I'm getting ready for my granddaughter's graduation. I'm packing to go to Atlanta, but I'm gonna meet you in 10 minutes." And you know what? And guess what, Mr. Mayor? You know what he told me? Who owned this pro, the property? Somebody in Florida. Thank you, Pete, thank you.
We'll track that down.
Okay, moving on. We got a, the topic that we'll be discussing would be the Mayor's Action Line. Mr. Miles Brown. Mr. Miles Brown has been given 12, I mean, six extra minutes. It's donated by Mr. Kenneth Gay Jr. and Mr. Milton Bellard. So, Mr. Brown, you have nine minutes.
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record.
Miles Brown, 1020 Fourth Avenue. First and foremost, I want to give a special recognition to the Mayor's Action Line. There was a meeting here on March 11th where I vividly remembered there was a group of wealthy homeowners that were pretty upset with how the Mayor's Action Line was running. And I remember actually, some people here, on the council that was here, they had some concerns on how it was being done, because people wasn't getting response times quickly. And I can't say what it's, what it was like then, but it seems as of recent, it has gotten much better. And the reason why I say that is because a lot of times when I would come up here, and I was told, "Go to the legal department, go here, go there," that never was the case, that I was told to go to Mayor's Action Line. I was waiting for months to get answers to things, and by the time I went to the Mayor's Action Line, contacted them, I got those answers within two days. So, I don't know who necessarily, you know, if there was some meetings that was done, but based off of that information, it seems it's gotten much better. So I'm just really saying, not calling anybody out, but just in a sense, there were a lot of city officials that was giving me the runaround and possibly getting a lot of other people to run around, and always say, "Well, go here, go there, blah, blah, blah." And really, the case was, is always the Mayor's Action Line. So, I've just pointed out to y'all and the other off, officials, like, "Hey, if you don't know anything, and a law body stands asks you a question, hey, go to the Mayor's Action Line." It's not fair to other departments and other people to be assigned to things that have nothing to do with them. That has happened many times, and that only causes more time and more money to be wasted because people are getting a runaround. And I'm not just talking about citizens. I've seen here, and I've watched a lot of these meetings where even sometimes US councilmen get to run around on a lot of things, but that's a different story. So, I'm just making that up, because, you know, a lot of times when I try to bring about these issues, and I make sure I read a lot of these policies before I come up here, it always seems like I get discredited, even already know the answers to these things. But, you know, hopefully, just going forward as a council, and really all officials, you know, I'm not saying that you gotta know everything about everything. You don't have to be like Google, but it is important sometimes that you may want to read some of these policies just in case, you know, somebody tells you something, just because somebody in the department tells you, they may not know the answer, and that only, you know, prolongs things and stuff like that. So, I'm bringing that up because that needs to get addressed. And it's, I just, hopefully now people realize that I'm not the crazy one. So, you know, before I move on to my next topic or dealing with that, is there any questions that y'all have? Because I know some of y'all are new here, but a lot of y'all do recognize me, and I've brought up a lot of these issues, but again, I made out to look like a conspiracy theorist when I bring these things up, so.
You're doing good right now. That's Brown's phone.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, now that I've mentioned that, I do want to give, again, the special recognition to the Mayor's Action Line. And with that being said, this time, I've addressed this on April 29th, addressed this on June 10th, but technically, I have no choice but to address it to the council, because based off of the chain of command, this is the technical standard of where I have to go. So, just to point back to it, in March of this year, I filed a complaint with the police. And for whatever reason, I have the paperwork here, plenty of paperwork, to show anybody that needs to see it, where they're not investigating my complaint. So then they sent it to the legal department, and I've been trying to say for the longest, it's not the legal department's responsibility.
Mr. Brown, can you tell us what that complaint was?
Go into full detail or just, oh? Okay, so, based, based upon the complaint, there was a lot of things that was skipped over in the complaint. And I have proof, body camera footage, I have paperwork to show that there was a lot of cover up in these things. So, I had no choice but to file a complaint, because I actually have contacted the police many times on this, and I was told by particular people in the police department, that the only thing to do is just to file a complaint. I didn't want to do it, but there is public records where, if you read about it, it's not true. And I, I make sure to read every public record. I make sure to, you know, get the body camera footage and match everything with it. So that's what I'm referring to in a lot of that. Now, I could go into detail for it, but I don't have enough time, so. But, point of it is, I filed this complaint. They have the paperwork here saying they're not investigating it. And then, for three months, it was sitting on the city attorney's desk, and I already knew that it wasn't their responsibility to investigate complaints, but I didn't get a response about my complaint until I went to the Mayor's Action Line. And that was two days after I contacted them. Had I not got it, had I not contacted the Mayor's Action Line, that complaint would still be on the legal department's desk. So, after that, I got a response saying they're not investigating it, because it's too subjective. But anyways, I contacted the Mayor's Action Line again to see if there was anything else I could do or any avenue to exhaust with the city to get my complaint investigated. I understand other people have issues, but I just don't find it to be just that my complaint is just getting ignored, especially when I've offered to give any evidence, body camera footage, or paperwork to show what I'm referring to. So I'm asking as a council, because the only thing I can do is, is contact the Mayor's Action Line. I've tried to get in contact with anyone above on the chain of command, like the city administrator or anyone else, but technically, they're not responding to me, so I have to come here as a council and see, is there any other avenue that gets to get exhausted?
Mr. Brown, do you have a case number? Or do you have a number assigned to that complaint?
Uh, I don't know if they give you a case number, but I can give you the dates and stuff.
Can you look at the paperwork and see, so we'll know just where to go look?
I mean, I have plenty of information, but this is what I have.
Yeah, I just want you to take it, so you'll know where to go for this.
Yeah. And the thing is, like I said, I've been, the legal department has been, for the most part, in some aspects, been communicated with me. I contacted them yesterday, but again, they're not responding. They said that there's nothing they can do. And I already knew that answer, but again, I've had to come up here, and I've been told that, "Hey, this is the process, this been going on forever," but that never was the case, so I have to come up here as a, as, in a formality before, to make sure there's any other avenue that gets exhausted. I'm not asking for a bunch of stuff to get done. I just want to make sure that it's investigated properly, and that it's just, the fact is, a lot of these things that I put in there, really all of I put in there can be proven. It's just a matter of, why is it not getting investigated like everybody else? And, and the thing is, is that, and this is just a theory, but again, this wasn't, it was sat on the legal department's desk for over three months. And I know from complaint process, it doesn't take three months to get investigated, and also with that, they're trying to, I'm assuming, the statute of limitations has a certain limit. So that's the reason why I have to come up here and make my case with everything that I've done. So I'm asking y'all, is there anything that I can do or anything I can provide to make sure, before I do anything else, to exhaust every avenue with the city?
Well, this is what I would ask you, Mr. Brown, if being that we starting over, it's a new council, whatever the case may be, could you give the, our legal department till the next agenda meeting? That, that should be long enough. We research and find out what happened with this complaint, so that we can have an answer. Right now, I don't know what the complaint is, I don't know what it was about, and, you know, we have to research and look at both sides. You have your evidence, but Mr. Rubin and the legal department are gonna take a look at it, and maybe you can check back during the week, next week? Check with the legal department, and let's see where we at before you come back again.
Okay.
All right?
So, my, my question is, I've already given a bunch of stuff to the legal department already, so I have to go back and reprint everything again, or whatever the case?
We'll be happy to print it for you.
Okay, because, like I said, I've, I've sent stuff to them, and sometimes it's never found or received, or it gets lost, so.
Just make sure you get a copy of it, and we'll make sure we give you a copy.
So just, the only person to give it to is Mr. Rubin, and no one else?
Yeah, Mr. Rubin will take it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Wait, it's not 100 pages or nothing, huh?
Well, actually, it's, it's a lot, like I said, and, and.
We just need the file number. That'll be enough, huh?
It's a file, so you don't need like video footage or anything like that?
We have that on.
Well, hey, well, I guess people, people couldn't find it for four months, so, you know, just saying, so.
We on the clock, Mr. Brown. We on the clock, have it right now.
I'll, I'll get back with you soon, you know. I come here a lot anyway, so I'll see you, so thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Mr. Marks, if I might, once we get additional information, we look into it. My recommendation, we'll have a couple of council members there, try to let y'all know all the facts, so you got the clear facts of what's going on, and bring you up to date with everything.
So, Mayor, you got anything you want?
Yes, that's right, yeah.